And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are the plastic sleeve on the back wall. And before we get started, I will ask Chairman Soule to please stand and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to say, tell us about, any announcements to make, now would be the time to do it. We just ask that you come to the podium, tell us your name, and what do you have to say?
Good day, thank you.
Of course.
I would just like to announce that we're having a second annual Musician for Hope concert that we held January 13th at 7:00 PM at the Els Club. This is the support, the whole program, which I think everyone's aware of. So if you'd like the tickets, they're $10, and we'd be glad to get you some tickets for it.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Cindy Jacobs from the library, and I just wanted to let all of you know that as a result of our winning the national medal on the 29th, the first and the second of December, StoryCorps will be at the library, recording 15 stories that we've gathered folks from in and around the area to be preserved for posterity in the National Library of Congress. So it's a pretty exciting event, and we're thrilled. We got some really great people that would like to share their stories of the area. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Scott McDo and live in Ward 7. I just want to say a big thank you to Mark and his crew for the great work they did taking down 232 Water Street. Looks amazing. And also to Matt and your crew for setting up the tree yesterday. Tree was very awesome. You guys did a pretty good job, and especially, I know we had a last-minute kind of request, but you guys did come and fix it, and I know it's gonna look good. So invite everybody to come down Friday night after the parade of lights to see the tree all lit up.
Great, nice talk. Thank you.
Hello, Julian Payne, Ward 5. I'm here to announce today an event. We're calling it Happening, called Walking the Beat, to celebrate the Police Appreciation Day. It's organized by Blake Winslow and myself. Blake is a political science student at Thomas College. We wanted to march from Thomas College to the Waterville Police Station with a twofold goal: to celebrate Police Appreciation Day and Thomas College. What better place to participate than an institution rich in criminal justice, forensics, criminal law, and political science? Police Appreciation Day actually occurs on January the 9th, but due to cold weather, and we're really a bunch of wimps, we're gonna do it a month earlier, on December the 9th. We then realized we could encompass all those that serve at the same time: veterans, public workers, firemen, municipal employees, nurses, doctors, secretaries, teachers. It's a Big Ten event. Be there or be square. It will be December the 9th, as I said, leaving from Thomas College at 12 o'clock, marching to the Head of Falls, taking one hour. To get to the Head of Falls is three miles. At that point, we can pick up walkers at the Head of Falls who don't want to journey that far, which probably be me. And it'll take 10 minutes from Head of Falls to get to the police station. Let's see, where Chief Massey will be there to receive the people. Hopefully, there'll be some donations, small amounts, so that they can buy police force lunch on the actual day. There's also Burger King and McDonald's by the Head of Falls if people need the washroom. Chief Massey and his staff provide an outstanding service to the community. They put their life on the line and still maintain the highest standards of integrity. With so much negativity in the press that the police receive, we would like to acknowledge a force that does it right. Let's see, let's see. So our city, our force honoring all those who served or who have served, walking the beat together, you can't beat that. I did learn at the budget meeting that the police have the highest financial liability in the city. Let's see, it's titled, the event is Thomas College Students and Friends, and are good. Any questions, contact myself or Blake. And the mayor will be marching with us as well, I've heard, and if he brings half of his family, you'll have a darn good turnout. Thank you.
I've been paying taxes in Waterville for 45 years, and I just want to say I'm proud to be a citizen of Waterville. All the nice things, Matt turning the downtown into Cringleville. Public Works Department, last Thursday, their truck broke down. Nobody even knew. They got a dumpster and a bucket loader, and those guys have a great attitude. It's good to see them out there, not complaining. I just asked when the new truck's coming. He said, "Not soon enough, January." They sure deserve it. They were working so hard that day, it was raining. The whole city is really bubbling and really alive, and I'm glad to be a citizen of Waterville. Thank you.
Anything else for community notes? Okay, we'll move on to the disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there anybody on the council who feels they have a conflict of interest in voting on any of the agenda items here tonight?
I have a question, actually, related to that, which is that I sit ex officio on the Quarry Road Committee. Is that a conflict of interest?
I do not believe it is.
I don't think so either, so, all right, just kidding.
I'm on the board of the Waterville Land Trust, so there's no money changing hands in this amendment, but I wanted to raise that as an issue.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Could I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And there is no unfinished business, we're gonna move on to new business. And first up, we have Resolution 171, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
All in favor?
Resolution Providing for Quarry Road Memorandum of Understanding.
They're most stood up.
Second.
Okay, Michael.
I'd like to provide just a brief introduction, and of course, I have plenty of help here with Matt and other folks from Quarry Road, Friends of Quarry Road. We do have an existing memorandum of agreement with Quarry Road. We've had one for quite a few years. As the project began to develop more and more and more, it became evident that the city and Friends of Quarry Road needed to put things in writing. So we've done that over time. This revision may be the third or fourth that we've gotten to, and probably the most significant. And the major reason for that is that on the financial management part of the recreation area, for a number of reasons, it has become necessary for the city to be the primary fiscal agent. And so, a lot of what you see in the revisions has to do with that responsibility. We're not in any way making any additional guarantees about additional money, additional financial support, it's just it's really become necessary, because of how successful Quarry Road has been, for us to be able to collect the revenues and make the expenditures, rather than entirely volunteer group, try to coordinate how to collect money, where to keep it, how to pay those bills that are, you know, coming due, especially during the winter time. And so, really, it's very important for the city, I think, to control all of that. And I say "control," certainly, we're gonna control it in consultation with the Friends of Quarry Road. But for that reason, the financial, and the other thing is the liability part, it's become a very active, popular area, and so, it's important, because the city owns the property, owns the equipment, owns the buildings, for us to, and where we're gonna be liable, responsible, then it's up to us, really, to manage how those things happen out there, again, with the support and consultation from the Friends of Quarry Road. So that's kind of a summary, and I know that I've probably glossed over some of the points that Matt or Joe?
Well, yeah, that's pretty good. If you have questions, we've got Dave McClay, our treasurer, and Joe Reiser, our president. I'd like to hand out some really awesome things that Dave and his marketing team have put together this winter, so when you get it, you're welcome. Have a look.
There was, if I may, there was one provision in there that I think is worth drawing your attention to, and that is that the Friends have put aside a rainy day fund in the amount of $10,000, so that if the operating expenses for the venue exceed the amount of revenue raised by the sale of tickets, the Friends, you know, on the back of our fundraising, will fill that hole and pay that deficit. So the city is not paying one cent extra to run the venue. So I just wanted to stress that. And I should say, we're off to a great start. Season pass sales are up about a third over last year. Our mailing only went out today, I received mine in the mail today, so that's in advance of any of our publicity. We've made snow at the venue three times, it's gonna be pushed out and spread tomorrow. We should be open for business on Thursday. So that would make us the only place in the state of Maine open for Nordic skiing. So teams from all, we're expecting high school teams from all across the state to be contacting Maine's office Monday to get themselves on snow, and they'll all be paying customers. So should be a great thing for Waterville.
Yeah, I mean, the questions that I have, and I guess first, before I get into my questions, just want to say Quarry Road and the project that's going on, you guys are doing terrific work. I mean, I've heard nothing but great things about the economic impact it hasn't had on the city of Waterville, and not only that, the trails are groomed to perfection, and in fact, from what I've heard, there's schools coming all the way from Rumford to come and use the facility. So it's putting Waterville on the map, first and foremost. The question that I have regarding the changes to the memorandum of understanding, and Matt, I've talked to Mike, I've talked to Nick and Steve about this already, is more or less, I'm concerned about the city assuming the role of business manager, I guess, if you will, at the Quarry Road. I know we have assumed that role to a certain extent, but if you recall, back in May, April, May, during the budget talks, I had asked about the labor tracking piece to this. And one of the concerns I had was in regards to one of the changes to the memorandum of understanding, was that the city would be responsible for establishing an annual operating budget for the Quarry Road facility. And I guess my question is, is if we don't have a definitive answer as to how much labor we're actually devoting to Quarry Road, how can we set an operational budget and adjust the fees accordingly to make sure that we're compensated for how much effort we're actually putting in there? And it's come to the point where I think we can do it. It's a matter of changing tracking practices, I would think, in order to do that. I think, like I said, Quarry Road is not going anywhere, and I think that it's gonna be here for years to come, and if the city's gonna assume the role, that we should outline the business practices that we plan on using in order to get the city compensated to the point where, I'm willing to accept Quarry Road as a lost leader in the business sense, where, you know, if we're cutting a loss here, we're taking the leader as economic impact of the city of Waterville. But I have to answer, I also have to answer questions from my constituents that ask me, how much time does the city put in to the Quarry Road? And most of the time, I don't know the answer. And I know, I know you have an idea, and I'm just curious if you've tracked that to this point, and if you've figured out what the budget would be for labor costs associated. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't tracked it formally to this point, but I have some rough, you know, I have a rough idea. During the winter months, say, from mid-December until mid-April, it's 16 weeks, my crew, I've just got the two full-timers and myself, I'd say we're out there 50% to 60% of the time. So in the agreement from the beginning, dating back 10 years ago, with John Coons and Mike, is that my crew of the two men would be kind of dedicated to that area in the winter time, and the city would, you know, we would do it, it would be up to my discretion if there are things that are going on downtown, or anywhere, cemetery, Veterans Park, Head of Falls, that we would take care of it. I think we've done a pretty good job over, you know, the 10 years in getting it all done, one, and that the second part of the agreement was that we wouldn't be snowmakers, and that any overtime that my two men spend working at Quarry Road would be reimbursed by the Friends of Quarry Road, and it has been. So it sounds like your biggest concern is tracking, so we would have to do something through the, like, through the payroll system and through finance to track time, and it's something, it's definitely something that's doable. I mean, the biggest concern, I mean, what you could do, the other piece to this, is that in the private sector, we have time sheets, and we track billable hours every week. You could make the employees responsible for tracking how much time that they spend in different departments or different areas. You know, of course, I'm not asking, you know, how much time you spend at the cemetery, because it's not, it's not, we're not setting fees according to how much time you're spending at the cemetery, in that sense. I guess my concern is, is I want to know what the ceiling is. I mean, because at this point, we're accepting full responsibility for maintaining and going out there, but at the same time, it seems like we don't have, there's no ceiling to it, and that it could end up being just a cash cow, where we're just dumping more labor, more labor, and more labor. And I'm not saying that that's the case, Matt. I don't believe that ever would happen, no, because, yeah, I understand from your perspective, and I appreciate your concern, and if, well, yeah, and if...
Can I add a little something to that? I mean, Nick, when you're saying that we're going to assume responsibility, that's not the right word, if we're gonna continue to assume responsibility, because we've had, you know, this memorandum in the past. I mean, this is just a continuation of it?
It's not the same, this is not the same document that was signed last January. And I can tell you that, because I've actually gone through it, almost verbatim, word for word, and I can tell you, one of the pieces that was in there that is missing is snowmaking that was in the previous document that is not in this new document, that I couldn't find, at least. So I guess my question is, are we assuming the role of snowmaking in this new document? City employees aren't, but it's up to us, yeah, well, actually, yes, we are, we are assuming, but only when we have the budget to do so.
Can I also say, though, that when 1,200 athletes show up and their parents are staying in hotels and eating in the restaurants, that certainly pays for those two guys.
Sure, but we also have volunteers that are planting, you know, flowers in our median strips, and I honestly don't want to be paying overtime for an employee to make snow on Quarry Road when we have much more dire needs in the city.
Oh, so can I speak to this? Nick, I think I can allay your concerns a little bit. So it seems to me there are really two different sets of people that we're talking about working out there. So one is, how much time do Sam and Steve and Matt himself spend out there? And Matt's been tracking that directly, well, indirectly.
Indirectly.
Indirectly. And what Sam and Steve and Matt are doing this year is the same as what they've been doing. So whenever, what we have tracked, and I'm having trouble pulling it up and talking at the same time, but what Friends have tracked in the past years are overtime hours spent grooming, and then the hours that someone is paid hourly to manage the snowmaking machines, and then any of the costs that are associated with, like, you know, getting the machines serviced in an annual basis. So we've put together a kind of budget model based on those expenses that ran through the Friends last year as a fiscal agent, and so we know, right, so we have those numbers here, and I don't know if Matt's provided them to you, but we could certainly, I mean, he can walk up there and share this with you. And so, these are all essentially variable costs that the city is not, you know, committed to, really, in any way. I mean, Matt has this sort of discretionary ability, right, as the manager, to decide, you know, we've had a lot of revenue this year, and we should still be making snow in late January. But he can say, "We don't have that money." And remember, there's this $10,000 rainy day fund that the Friends are backstopping the thing with. So if we get it wrong, and these incremental variable costs exceed our revenue, city's gonna be made whole. So I hope that, I mean, there's still the issue of what Sam and Steve and Matt are doing, but they're doing what they've been doing, I think.
The question that I have is, what is whole? Because at this point, we don't know. We're taking our employees out of normal duties to go and work at Quarry Road. There's a value to that. And what I'm saying is that we need to know how much we're providing to Quarry Road, so that we know that we're made whole. We're taking, employees that are working at Quarry Road are at Quarry Road and not doing other duties in the city.
Right, I mean, that's what they've been doing for the last decade. That's all.
No.
Can I ask a question? Given that there are duties, I think sometimes they get skewed between public works and Parks and Rec, because those are two different things. Matt, would you say that in the winter time, your duties are different in such that you're not mowing lawns, you're not doing, I think that you, that your crew has that time, that this would almost fills the need for essential time for your crew?
Yeah, that's why it's worked, that's why it's worked over the last 10 years. And in emergency circumstances, again, just going back, counselor, to the discretion that I have with the crew, when we need to help out Mark and his crew, we know what, we know what the priorities of the city are. And we will... My point is, if you're spending half your time there, then half... For the 16 weeks of the winter, other than that, it might be a tenth of their time, just so people understand that. If you're spending 50% of your time, in my mind, then 50% of your salary should be allocated and paid for by Friends of Quarry Road. Well, that's a different model, yeah, than what we've had. I mean, that's, that's the logical approach, and that's why, that's why I'm hung up on this memorandum, is because I honestly don't think we know exactly what the, what the actual budget is, and we're, we're kind of hiding it with labor costs, and there's money attached to labor costs. Labor's not free, and it has a whole slew of benefits and everything that comes along with it. Right, we've got all that stuff, though, we do. We've been, and we can track it better. I think if that would make, you know, folks feel better, more comfortable, we can, we can certainly, I'm happy to do it, because I'm curious, too, and as far as like the existing budget, historically, we've got every dime that we spend out there accounted for. The tangibles are accounted for, you're absolutely right. Right, but we can do it, we can do it on the personnel side, too, if that's what folks want to do, we're happy to, because we're not, we don't want to give the perception that we're hiding. Sorry? I don't feel comfortable tonight to vote on this until those figures are presented, and we have enough time to review them. And it's, to me, I feel like the city's assuming more role, and like you even mentioned, this is a substantial change. It's not the same document that we had last year, and that's my point, is that there are many changes that I think, if voted in favor tonight, we're assuming a lot of unanswered questions that I think need to be ironed out before the city assumes more role, in a more formal manner. I understand that that might be the case of the past 10 years, but I think that we need to...
Can I ask you just a point of clarification? Because you've said you're willing to have this be a lost leader. If that time was tracked, and it was billed to Friends of Quarry Road, and they still pay us the same, and just, we just ended it as a loss, but the folks are right, you're happy with it?
I'm absolutely happy with that. That's my point, is that I think in terms of tracking and in terms of budgeting, it's easier for us to feel, all right, we've already nailed down Quarry Road, we know how much it costs, and let's, let's look at marketing and expanding the Quarry Road and working with Friends of Quarry Road to try to find more revenue there. I mean, I think it really could help us out, we just think, at this point in time, with where we're at, I just think that we need to do some work, use some more.
Unfortunately, my concerns, Counselor.
I want to ask a point of clarification. So my understanding is that we, with the new memorandum, we are not changing the agreement of labor time that will be devoted to Quarry Road. Is that correct? That will remain the same? So the 50% to 60% that Parks and Rec has been spending over those 16 weeks is not gonna change, it's gonna remain the same that it has been the past decade.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. Now, I don't know if you...
Not necessarily, because the snowmaking was in the previous one, it's not, and that was Friends of Quarry Road, and that's my point, is that now, we're assuming that role. So I mean, and we're also assuming the role of administrator.
Can I...
Costs associated with that, too, I'm speaking right now. And what I'm saying is, is that we need to be diligent on how we handle that, and I, at this point, I don't think we've nailed it down.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? Did you explain before, Matt, just bear with me, that when, or maybe perhaps it was Joe that explained this, that when the money for snowmaking has run out, when the money for, that's been budgeted for labor involved in making snow runs out, if that were to happen, then, then you would stop snowmaking in order to prevent the city from accruing additional costs, although we have the $10,000 rainy day fund, which would allow us to extend a little bit beyond where that drop-dead point would otherwise be. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, so there would be no scenario where the city would be incurring additional costs because of the terms of this agreement?
Only if I, yeah, lost track of the budget and didn't, wasn't doing my job.
Which you've never done.
Well, I...
Right, thank you.
Counselor. I think Counsel Champagne raises some interesting topics with itemized budgeting necessities. I think back in May and April that we suggested it, and we wanted a breakdown of it, and I think, and I'm encouraged by supporting that. At the same time, I am completely supportive of what the Friends of Quarry Road has done in conjunction with a partnership with the city, and I believe this area, this prime-time environmental recreational area is one of the hidden jewels of Waterville that we have only tapped into. The persona of this area is region-wide and spreading, even out of state. It's where I'm seeing an economic stimulus of unprecedented proportions. This is something that the city has to be involved in, if we want to raise the bar and have more stimulus coming into the community, from every recreational standpoint, environmental standpoint, from just, from just, it's one of the few last bastions of, well, a wildlife area that the community has left, and we have to, and I'm fully supportive of the city being a finance administrator of this area because of the value of what this area is. I do support a more of a scrutinized, budgetary, itemized process, like Counsel Champagne's saying, I support that, but at the same time, you know, I want to really come out in support of, and like Steve Soule said, this is bringing in unprecedented revenue, and it's only going to increase, and I think the city has to be mindful of that and supportive of that. And I think we can, I think we can get to the middle here on what we're talking about. I have full confidence in Parks and Recreation Director Matt Skian for what he's done out there, his discretion, I, from what I've seen and been around with his crews and what he's done at Purnell Wrigley Field, just an array of different things, whenever I've had to ask him for favors from my ward, and I'm sure everybody on this council can say a bunch of things about Matt, but the thing about it is, I think that his department is well-run. His department is very well-run and very well-managed, and, you know, I have full confidence that he will come forward and he will, he will, he will come through with a more itemized personal budget, if that's what's required.
I guess we can't go back in time, so, I mean, you could probably track it going forward, and I think that maybe assists in the next years, because I don't know how we go back and try to itemize it now.
I mean, the only way we can get the figures that you're asking for is to go through this winter, and we can track those. winter, and we can track those. But obviously, we can't give you anything more tonight, other than to say this, and I think this is the most important thing. We are not going to dedicate any more labor to snowmaking and grooming than what we have in the past. We do it, our city crew does it during the workday, after hours, if they are involved. Any cost, overtime cost for them being there is 100% reimbursed. So we're going to do the same thing we've always done. Matt's given you an idea percent wise what their total commitment is to Quarry Road. I'm worried like you are, just let me finish, because this is the important thing. We have the same sized crew now that we did before Quarry Road was created. Now we have a possibility of adding a Riverwalk, right? Which is also going to come somewhat under his control and responsibility. So that's, I think, Nick, something of what you're getting at. What about all these things that we're doing, which are great things? I certainly am not going to argue against the Riverwalk either. But they place strain on city personnel. Is it going to mean hiring additional people in the future? That's, to me, the biggest question.
Well, you just said that you track hours for snowmaking. How can you track hours for snowmaking but not in other areas of, of effort at Quarry Road?
Well, you're talking about during the summer?
Well, you just said that we get reimbursed fully, and, which leads me to believe that you've tracked the hours that our employees-
Just the over, just the hours that are spent beyond the regular workday.
Overtime.
Okay? So they're there working and being paid by the city, whether they're working at Quarry Road, or they're working on another site throughout the city. So do the kind of thing you're talking about, I mean, we could say that for a lot of other departments, like Public Works has three mechanics. They do all the mechanic work for police, the airport, fire somewhat. So are we going to say to the mechanics, keep track of how much you spend on police, keep track of how much you spend on fire?
No, because we're-
It's bureaucratic.
Because that's all in the same, we're, we need to be able to set, this is a different entity, this is a business now. I mean, we're now creating revenue and we need to be able to set the fees accordingly. And it, like, like I was saying, if Matt's spending 50% of his time there, then 50% of his salary should be allocated to Quarry Road, and Quarry Road should be responsible for paying 50% of his salary in that particular timeframe, in the 18 weeks. And all I'm seeing in the budget is like a $6,000 expense incurred on the city of Waterville, which is not true.
Oh, okay, so you're asking-
It's higher.
Friends of Quarry Road to pay for city personnel time spent during the regular workday?
No, hang on, I'm going to, I'm going to clarify this, and then I'm going to ask if other counselors have any additional questions, because we're going to move the debate forward at this point. I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, when Nick is asking that for the hours to be tracked, he's saying that it actually could go into a deficit on the budget, not that necessarily that Friends of Quarry Road pay for all of that time, he's saying that he wants to have an accurate tracking.
I want to know how much it is. I just want to know, how much, how much is that, what is that number?
Right.
If we're, are we, are we eating $50,000 a year, $100,000 a year, or $6,000 a year?
Right. Mike, I'm moving, Mike, I'm moving the debate on this, are there any other counselors that have any other questions or comments?
I would just comment briefly to say that I have been attending Quarry Road, Friends of Quarry Road meetings since I took office. I have never seen a more tightly run, well-organized organization, and it's a model for a public-private partnership that generates a tremendous amount of revenue for this community. It's an incredibly important part and that we've got, and we should value it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Julian Payne, Ward five. I don't know if it's the drinking water, but I 100% agree with my counselor, Nick Champagne, in Ward five. It is not, you can roll your eyes, Lauren Lessing, but I'm a paid taxpayer.
Okay.
So I hear Steve Soul's point, it brings in money. I hear everyone's point. I hear they do a great job. That's not the issue. The issue is, when you, when I was at the budget meeting and saw it presented, they couldn't accurately tell the labor costs to Waterville, to the taxpayers. Now, your primary function of a council is to work on a budget. We're not saying the city shouldn't pay it, we're not saying it's wrong, we're just saying, what's the plus versus the minus? And even if it is more minus for labor costs, the city probably would eat it, but at least the taxpayers can see the plus and minus. It's that simple.
Exactly, exactly as I summarized it.
Right. And it's the easiest thing to do, you have a time punch card, when a staff member goes from your facility to that facility, clink, clink, it logs your in and out time, the end of the week, you can calculate it. It's just that simple. It's plus versus minus on a budget. Not political, not whether it's great, not whether it brings in money, just so that when people attend a budget meeting, as I did, you can say plus, minus, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to vote. All those in favor? All opposed. Next, we have ordinance 172, 2017.
An ordinance providing for a amendment to zoning, being enacted by the Waterville City Council, acting as municipal officer, at Appendix A, zoning Article II, Section The official zoning map dated April 6, 1999, and the written description of zoning coverage dated July 6, 1971, be and hereby amended as follows. Two College Cottage Street Assessor Parcel 63-174 is rezoned from commercial C to residential C.
To adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
And Sarah did pass out a new and improved map to-
Is there anyone here tonight, or is there any explanation as to what the change is for?
I don't think so, no.
Hi.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead, if you could. Thank you.
I don't even know where the property is, but maybe that helps you need to point anything else to them.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Jody Heath, and that is my property. And it is now zoned as commercial, and we would like to build a garage on our property. And in order to meet the proper setbacks, we just need to have it rezoned as a residential property. So that is what we're requesting, in order to meet that setback.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
And this does take two votes. I just want to make sure you understood that.
Okay.
Any ordinance change requires two votes by the council, so it'll be final at the next meeting, or two, September 5th, or whatever that person says.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Order 173, 2017.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for a amendment to Order 111, 2017, sale of city property.
Question adopted.
Second.
Oh. I have copies of a revised deed. The deed had to be changed because the original deed did not include the stipulation about open space. So the property, this property is at 232 Water Street. The house was just demolished last week? Week before, two weeks ago. And the city is deeding it to the Waterville Community Land Trust. SENA is involved, of course, and they wanted the deed from us to them to include a stipulation that the property will not be developed for residential purposes, but will be used for open space. So if you look at the last paragraph on that cover page, front page, you'll see that that language, which Bill Lee drafted, is there to explain the open space requirement. Okay? So this is what, did everybody get one? Yep. Quickly. Any questions?
If they want to use-
Well, this is a vacant lot.
Hey, I guess my only question is, if they want to use it for open space or re-deed it to them, why do we have to put it in the deed that it's a restriction for future purchasers? Should they decide not to have it, want to deede it to somebody else?
They wanted it restricted so that it's not in the future used for residential purposes. They might put a gazebo out there, some other picnic tables, things like that.
Are they going to pay taxes on it?
Sorry?
Is that, are they going to pay taxes on it?
No, this is tax, yeah. I believe Waterville Community Land Trust has taxed it.
No.
Not yet.
We pay taxes. If I want you to, any property we own-
You pay property taxes.
Any property we own, we pay taxes on.
Okay, sorry.
So we would have to, we would pay taxes.
Yep, that's right. Because you pay taxes on the other house that you redid.
Yeah, the two that we did, yeah.
Yeah, which you did a great job on, too. Have you done one or two homes?
We've done, we remodeled one.
Yep.
And then we've got, we just bought 226, which is next to 232, as far as, the house isn't removed, but, you know, the future plans of that site later on, within the future, but right now, the only one we actually have, it has a house on, is 181.
Okay.
But deed 272, we'll still pay, copy taxes. Any questions?
Any questions?
Did we get the answer to the question, though, that the mayor asked? I mean, like, I understand that this is what you guys want now, but should you be able to control 100 years from now that nobody can build a house there?
That's what, that's what they wanted. Yep, that's what they asked for.
Why? I'm not trying to be belligerent about it, I'm just more, I always have a question when we're binding future, future generations on a finite-
I think the plan was, is basically because, you know, as far as, you know, the land trust is to approve affordable housing, but it's also to, you know, promote like green space and, you know, areas where people can, you know, just go and enjoy the river and, you know, things like that. And I think the other biggest problem was that you go to the South End. It was also kind of a vision of the, of SENA as well, because I know from the South End, how it's so clustered together, that, you know, we want more, that's probably the conference plan, was to put more open space and not have, you know, house on top of house on, you know. That way, this way, this will always be open as far as, you know, a green space where people can go and, you know, hang out. I mean, it's, I don't know if you've been down there yet, but, you know, it's, you've got a beautiful view of the water, and it's just, you know, like a little pocket park, especially there's going to be trails, hopefully trails down there, you know, just a little family area, pretty much, is, is what it's for. So, okay, so the South End doesn't get dense and, you know, kind of improve the South End, make it look, you know, more people friendly than kind of house friendly.
And Scott, that's in, that's in keeping with the, what was laid out in the strategic plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the original South Institute plan also was to create, you know, green space where we can. I think that's, you know, right now, we don't, we have a plan of, you know, it'd be more in the spring, but, you know, that's part of the, what's kind of our mind would be like what Mike said about maybe, you know, putting some benches, you know, thinking of like a nice little like patio area where, you know, people can rest and, you know, maybe eventually like a nice little, have river access, you know, somebody wants to go down there and fish, and, you know, just like I said, nice little maybe picnic tables and, you know, stuff like that, like I said, get a nice green space where like the people in the South can, can just go and, not just South End, but anybody in the city, anybody in the surrounding of Waterville, Windsor can just go and sit there and look at the river and watch the birds and-
Oh, yeah, and I, I think those are all notable and worthwhile causes. I just question binding future generations based on what somebody in this now wants for that land, because land is a finite resource.
Yeah, I see. It's, like I said, I think pretty much we're just trying to do that, to kind of keep, you know, keep the development down that area, down and just, I mean, there is plans later on, you know, in the future, maybe the parcel we just bought, maybe, to put, you know, in between there, you know, somewhere in that area, maybe, it's not 100%, so don't quote me yet, but, you know, maybe a nice little, small little house, like, on the property next to it. You can, that way, this, that will always try to, we'll always try to keep that as access to, you know, for future generations to enjoy.
In this particular parcel of land, was it, the person that owned it, was this what they, was their desire and their will for this? Was this expressed?
I'm not sure, because I think that original deal was done through SENA, which I was not part of that original deal, that was through Paula Raymond SENA itself, where then, then it was actually, see, SENA kind of couldn't hold on to it, was not really kind of, you know, able to hold on property, so then it was suggested to, to the land trust and-
Right.
Do you have any feedback on that, Mike? Yeah, there, there was nothing in that transfer from the original property owner to SENA about what he wanted the property used for in the future. There wasn't anything like that. He was happy to donate to SENA. What, what we found out, what they found out at that time is, they're not incorporated, SENA is not. So they were not able to receive the property, so the city, they asked the city if we could do it for them, for SENA. And we did. And there was no discussion with the former owner about any restrictions or anything like that. And then the Community Land Trust came forward and said to SENA, well, we're doing the same kind of thing throughout the South End, why don't you let us do it, it's more in keeping with what we do. You guys at SENA do other stuff, and so that's not that deep.
I think a good compromise would be that, you know, you, that this deal goes through and that for the next, you know, 40, 50 years that you want to hold it, that, you know, you don't build there, but then, I don't think you should try to control destiny, so.
I think it's a cause that needs to be revised. That's under, you know, that's my approach.
But you would still have, I mean, we're not stopping them from having this now, just-
Right, just as long as they own it, right.
If, if, say, we agree to this without that particular condition, I mean, they could still use it as an open space, like Steve was saying, yeah, so there's no reason to put it in there, so to speak. Yeah, I mean, I guess what, what I'm saying, Scott, is you can do what, do what you, do what you want to do with the, with the land in accordance to the SENA and, and the land trust. Having it in the document itself is not going to stop you from doing what you want to do. All it's going to do is going to stop any future users.
Is there actually a motion to strike that clause?
Take a motion to strike.
Do a second.
Second. So it'd be the last paragraph?
If, I, I understand what it is.
Oh, that the, that we're, we're going to approve the deed, we're going to approve the deed with striking out the last paragraph.
A condition of the conveyance of the above described properties.
Last paragraph, page one.
Page one.
Yeah, just scratching the last paragraph and that's it, and then accepting the rest of the document so that they can have the sale of the property.
They'll be able to use it for whatever purposes they want at that point.
Correct, right.
Quite honestly, you know, once you own it, I'm pretty sure you can revise your own deed. So, the city's not going to say you're going to do it, but if you want to do it yourself, I mean, I'm not giving you any ideas, but-
So we have a second, is there any discussion on that motion, or are we ready to take a vote on the motion? All in favor of the revision? All opposed?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask, as a member of the Waterville Land Trust.
Okay. So that was, were you opposed, Counselor Lessing?
No, I was, I was voting with her.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion to move as amended?
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
And all in favor?
We did skip over the Trachten Road item on the agenda.
Oh, there's no number on it as well.
Yeah.
Right. The State Department of Transportation last Monday night held a public hearing in this room. Counselor Champagne was there, I was there, I think that was it. And the DOT explained how the Trachten Road will be rebuilt from the new interchange to the West River Road, that section of the Trachten Road. And that's a requirement that they have to do, is hold a public hearing saying, we're going to rebuild this road, this is how long it's going to take us, how much it's going to cost, there might be some right of way issues, and it's quite a substantial project. It, you know, we were told at first it was going to be a $1.5 million rebuild, I think the number we heard last Monday night was $3 million.
Three to four, yeah.
Yeah. And that's, there are some very hugely beneficial things about this project, because Trachten Road's always been a city-owned road. So if the city were to rebuild Trachten Road just a year ago, we would have had to pay 100% of the costs.
We don't have to pay it.
Right.
We don't have to pay it.
We don't have to pay it. We do have to contribute $500,000 to this project, that was the deal originally made when the interchange was built. I think all of you remember that. But our cost is limited at that, and this road forever now is a state aid road. So it's their responsibility on the major capital improvements. We still plow it, of course. So there were a number of people that showed up. Some still, still concerned with traffic on Trachten Road and Eight Rod Road, and I know you, you had some, some concerns too.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate Mike working with me. I wanted to put this on the agenda as a discussion item for the council to hear. You know, we had twenty, thirty people there at that public hearing. What it kind of turned into was, you know, kind of asking questions in regards to the city and how the city can help out the current issues. We had a number of residents that live on the eastern, western, western, western portion of Trachten Road, away from the interchange, but in between Oakland Town Line and the interchange. That they feel like they are being overlooked, I guess if you will. And in a sense, you know, in regards to the projects that are going on, the project, this particular product ends at the interchange and does not go any further. So we have some residents that feel that they're being overlooked. And I made a promise to them that night that I would come back to the council and discuss the issues. The, the major issue is pedestrian and traffic safety, and that is currently going on. And I know Chief Massey and his crew have been doing a terrific job at increasing the patrol of the area for more enforcement of speeders in the area. We've received a number of complaints of speeders on Trachten Road. Any of you that have walked or biked Trachten Road realize that the over, the bridge going over I-95 is very narrow. That was explained to us at that meeting too. That, you know, what happens in the event if two tractor trailer trucks come in and we're not planning on widening this particular road. This was posted to the DOT representative at the time, and I thought it really brought up a great point. What happens if two tractor trailer trucks are coming and you're stuck on the bridge as a pedestrian? And he said, run, there is no way to get away from it. So my, I guess my point is, I've driven the road a number of times, and what I wanted to bring tonight was at least some consideration for possible signage. And it's nice to have Mark here tonight, because I think what I, I think could happen now, possibly in the next couple of months, or maybe into the springtime, maybe updating the signage on, on Trachten and Eight Rod Road. And, and, or even looking into it to figure out how we can work it with the DOT project. I just think that, you know, if we updated the signs, perhaps having a sign at the bridge saying that, you know, narrow bridge yield to pedestrian and bikes, and, you know, to slow down your, you know, slow down as they're approaching. Maybe in updating the, the speed limit signs. There are a lot of new people traveling roads that they haven't traveled in years. And a lot of them are probably driving, you know, with, with an idea in mind of where they want to go and not really paying attention to their surroundings. I think it would be a twofold piece to this, is that it would show that the city's staying on top of it and doing our due diligence to make sure that the residents are happy. But also to alleviate their concerns as, as their neighborhood is changing. And, and that's, that's what I'm trying to drive home, is that we, we have introduced a new interchange and their neighborhood is changing. We need to be able to provide them at least with some assurances that the city has not forgotten them and that we're actually looking out for their best interests and to make sure that the pedestrians and the bicyclists are safe. So I guess what I'm saying, suggesting tonight, and we're not voting on this or anything, but, if, Mark, if you could look into possibly looking into signage and what it would take to get our road up to, or even Chief Massey as well, yeah. Figuring out ways to, you know, to be able to distract speeders in the area or, you know, identifying, you know, blind, blind drives, you know, that sort of thing where at least informs the drivers that are driving the road of the potential dangers that are there, so. And I wanted to bring it up as an agenda item, more or less just to, for the people at home and for people here, to show that it has not been forgotten and that I wanted to discuss it. And if there's any other items that were, anything that anyone else wants to bring up, we can certainly discuss.
So how do we move forward just to make sure that we do follow up? I guess it's, it's important to make sure that we do follow up, Counselor, I assume you'll probably take a lead on that.
Sure.
But, and then if there's an issue, you bring it back to the council, so because then the people know that you are working on it and trying to address the issues, I think it's important.
Sure. I can absolutely.
Because I don't want it to like you talk about all these great things, like the signage and thing, and then nothing ever happened.
Definitely ever happened, right. I, I will certainly work with, with Mark and Chief Massey to, to, you know, see what we can do. And, and then if we have something to bring forward to the council, then I would certainly aid in sponsoring that particular resolution to do so.
An apology for skipping over that.
I know it wasn't intended.
Next is Resolution 174, 2017.
A resolution providing for rejection of bid for Riverwalk project. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as well that the sole bid submitted for the construction of the Riverwalk will be rejected because the bid amount far exceeds the funds available.
Motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
The loan bid came in at $1,100,000, $1,128,000. The engineer's estimate was almost $700,000, so like $400,000 over what was estimated. I think there are a number of reasons for that, and that's what we're working on now. The biggest reason probably is timing, asking for bids on construction work in October. That's a very difficult time for contractors to take time to prepare a bid. So we definitely plan to go out to bid again in January, February timeframe. The other thing is we're examining every work item in the project and looking at the cost. Now that we have bid quotes, we can examine or compare those quotes against what our engineer had estimated, see where we're off and why. So even though we're rejecting this bid, it serves a real purpose in letting us know maybe how, where we were off and what things we might be able to eliminate or reduce, or try to do with city help instead of contracting it all out. So we still have very much hope that we're going to be able to get within the total project cost, but we're going to do some, a lot of work between now and January.
Does this affect our, our grant opportunities or our outside funding opportunities at all?
Not at all.
Not at all? They're willing to wait it out?
Oh yes.
As, as, as we go through the process?
Yep. The big thing is we do for the grant, the major one we got from the state, you know, when we applied for the grant, we said, here's what we're doing for a project. We've got to do that same thing that we told them we'd do in the grant application. We can't scale back what we asked money for, so we have to have those components in. But we have other things in also in addition that we can play with.
I just wanted to say that I've been attending the Riverwalk committee meetings and I've been very impressed with the fantastic designs, the people have been really moving forward. I know this is a disappointing setback, but I definitely think it's the right way to move forward. This bid was clearly not appropriate or possible for the city at this time. And I'm fully confident that we can come back with better options in the future.
And I think in accordance with what we talked about, Mike, at the committee, that this is just a minor setback, to be honest with you, because I really believe like the timing was the issue. I do believe that the rebidding process will encourage other bidders more. And I think what we want out of the committee is to see more local contractors jump in on this and to help keep the cost down. And this really does, in a way, maybe is a blessing in disguise because I think this is going to encourage further fundraising for this project. And we have more allocated time to increase this project incrementally. So I think this is a, I think this is just a minor setback, a minor bump in the road.
Thank you. Just providing my own experience with, with the bidding process. Has the Riverwalk committee, I guess, you considered possibly phasing the project? Where, you know, we get the, the meat of what we want in the project and then possibly adding, you know, in a bid process, you could actually add an alternate where you have the base bid and then you have an alternate where if you have enough money, you complete the alternate.
That has all been considered.
All been considered.
Yeah.
That's all I want to know. Great, great.
Yeah, I think we have a list of thirteen alternates. We definitely have phases. Definitely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? Next is Resolution 175, 2017. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Now can I get a motion to adopt?
I jumped the gun.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay.
A resolution providing for bid award automated aid system.
No, I guess, I had that backwards.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's right, we've already moved it. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Next, Resolution 176, 2017. Can I get a motion to read by title only?
I'm going to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for purchase of radar speed sign.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just question, the previous one was 1,500, new one's 4,000. Is there a reason, I mean, it sounds like our new one is going to be collecting more data, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's our current unit that we have right now, it's about three years old. When we purchased it, it was the basic model, we paid about eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars, if I remember correctly. Gives us very little data, but we've had a lot of trouble with it. The data we got was very basic data, the car count, speed of the car, the average, average speed. But over the last year or so, we've had it repaired a number of times. And we also don't think that it's giving accurate car counts, and they just can't seem to fix it. We desperately need another unit, particularly this summer, we've had really an upsurge in complaints on speeding, especially with the new exchange up there. And this really helps us in traffic control and, and traffic enforcement. This new unit that we'd like to get from All Traffic Solutions, which is a pretty popular vendor for these type of traffic devices, offers one right now for $4,000. It is much more versatile, gives us a lot more data that we can access. It flashes the speed, it gives us the car count, it gives us the number of cars, it gives us the average speed. On any given street, on a particular speed limit such as 25, it'll give the car count for whatever period of time it's out there. But it'll also give you the number of cars that are speeding in a range of what they call low risk, medium risk, high risk. It's good data to have for us to know that which streets are very problematic. And it'll also give you data about the peak times that that occurs. It has a stealth mode so that it looks like it's off, but it's still counting cars. But it's just going to be.
Don't say two out.
Counting cars and speed. But it gives us, again, that additional ability to do some traffic control without using an officer. And we were stretched so thin this summer that we have an officer on one street trying to provide traffic control enforcement someplace else. By putting the sign up in a particular area when we get a lot of complaints, it lets the residents know that even though there's not an actual officer sitting out there on the street, that we're doing something. And it is a great deterrent. If you stand there and you watch us cars come, I think they'll let us at 12 inches high. The whole unit, I think, is thirty by twenty-four, and the display screen is fifteen by eighteen inches long. So this also flashes so that it catches your attention. And you can either use the actual digital speed readout or just say flash, slow down. So it has a lot of options to it, and we just simply desperately need it.
I like it.
It's, it's, it's $4,000 and.
Out of the drug forfeiture account.
Out of the drug forfeiture.
Yes, I mean.
They initially gave us a quote of 4,500 when we inquired about three weeks ago. And then we noticed they were having some holiday sales. So we called them back up and said, would we, you know, would we still be able to get those holiday sales?
Drive outside on Monday, maybe.
Holiday sale discounts, and they said, sure, we'll knock off $500. So it was 4,500, 4,085 dollars.
Yeah, Chief, I want to personally, and I think I speak for the whole council, commend you for the traffic enforcement. We've had, you and I have had many correspondence and emails and stuff and problematic streets. And there is a resurgence and, and a need for increased traffic safety and, and speed in the city. And like I said, you know, the problematic, problematic streets that I've had and daycares and concerns and being on the streets as much as I have been over the past three years and seeing some of the high speeders coming around the bends on Western Avenue. And just, and just in general, and your response for that has been utmost commendable. Like I said, with the resources that are stretched in, I think this sign is, is a definite need. And if it's, if it's an improved version, you know, I strongly encourage that because I know that in my streets and my residences, they, one of their number one, one of their number one beefs and one of their number one complaints is speed. They want their, they want their neighborhoods to be safe for their children. Their children's children, and I think we owe you a great credit and a great debt of service for what you do for the stretch of resources that you have.
Well, thank you very much, and obviously, traffic is a priority with us. It's, safety is, it's quality of life issue for folks to feel safe that they can walk down the street and have the children go out and, and motor the, the city highway streets without, you know, accidents and near misses. So we put a lot of effort, obviously, in the traffic enforcement, traffic control.
I've actually used a quote from you every time I hear a complaint from constituents about speeding. Is that typically, if your neighbors start speeding around the road, that they know where they're going. And the thing of it is, is that it's usually the people that are coming home from work. They want to get home, and they want to get home as quickly as possible, and it's the same route every time. And I can, I know when there's going to be speeders on my road. I could actually probably stand outside and, and actually wave to them as they go by, because I see them every morning. And you just, you get the, you get the same, same, you know, people doing the same.
We always tell people that when they call and demand traffic enforcement on their street. Glad to do it, and we'll do it as staffing allows and time allows. But just be aware, we may get one of your neighbors and they may not be happy about that, but. And in West Side, sometimes the unit will also allow us to determine, it's really a perception. And that perception can occur by simply one or two cars who travel your street, you know, several times a week with loud mufflers. And you might not see it all the time, but your perception is, God, they're speeding up there, it's crazy. And, and so we put the unit out there for four or five days and we get a car count. And we find that the average speed is, is the majority of the car count. And there's very little speeding that goes beyond eight, nine, or 10 over. So that's good information, the feedback for that particular person to say, you know, this, this is what it is, this is the data.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Yes.
So this machine is a tube, you essentially pay for yourself, because if it isolates areas of problem, then you know where the police comes and you get more tickets.
Sure, we can allocate our resources and.
More wisely than just get.
So if you're suggesting that we get some money from the tickets, we don't, I wish we did, but we don't.
You get a portion or no portion?
No portion, zero. We get no money, the city gets no money from, from the fines, none.
That's a good thing.
Zero.
We shouldn't be making money off people. All right, we're going to take a vote on this, all those in favor? Okay. Resolution 177, 2017.
A resolution providing for a campaign of votes and determination of the results of the municipal election held on November 7, 2017. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers as well that the City Council acting as the campaigning board of the campaign of the vote and the determination of the results of the municipal election held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, received and examined as follows.
Oh. Are you going to, you're going to have to read this whole thing, I'm sorry, because somebody said.
Mayor?
This is her favorite part.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah. No.
Want to tell you the one?
I think that we can, I think we can read, it's fine with the.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor?
All right. We have a little presentation for you, it's not going to last long, ten minutes, probably the most. But what I want is help from Mark and John, because we want to summarize for you what we've accomplished with our road work. And not only in the last year, but we're going to go back a little bit further. Speaking about going back in time, all right, I'll let you pass those out, and I'll continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I came to work for the City of Waterville, it was in October, so just a few months later I had to work on my first municipal budget. And when I looked at what they had in place, it was like, so where's the annual appropriation for roads? Well, we don't have, we don't have an annual amount for roads thing. No, we get to the end of the budget process and if there's any money left over, we.
No, we get to the end of the budget process, and if there's any money left, go, we allocate the road work. So, it's like, wow, we own the roads, we know we've got to keep them up. It's a huge selling point for the city or any town, have your roads in good shape. I mean, that's a very poor calling card if, you know, your major thoroughfares are in bad shape, which, you know, they have been, but the council has been great in supporting road improvements now over the last eight years, because we borrowed money three times to build roads. We did. And that's part of the problem is, they waited so long that it wasn't just a repave, it was a reconstruct in so many places. So, Mark has provided you a history of that in here, but before we go to that, I'm just going to take you to the first page. Are you going to?
I'll do it on you.
Mark, you're going to work that?
Sure.
All right. Can you look?
I'll come back and look. Give me the page.
I wish it was that easy. I wish it was that easy.
The paper on.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. We're engineers. Oh, Mark is doing that.
You're knocking the profession. You're hating on engineers here.
Yeah, but I didn't say IT engineer.
Ah, okay.
So, your inner cover page shows you the total road miles the city has. When you look at the total mileage, you realize how substantial it is. So, the only way to manage a road network that's this big is to have a system. And so, John O'Marty is our resident road management system expert, and John's going to give you a quick tutorial on how they do that.
So, for those of you that haven't met John O'Marty, City Waterville engineer. So, Waterville's road inventory, we have 272 local roads in Waterville. Local roads are roads that we maintain in the summer and in the winter. There's 25 state aid roads. Those are roads that we maintain in the winter, and the state typically maintains in the summer, and then 10 state highway roads that the state maintains in the winter and in the summer, for a total of 307 roads, just shy of 82 miles. On top of that, there's also additional paved areas that we maintain, schools, municipal parking lots, sidewalks, the concourse, the head of Falls Plaza, and the Quarry Road Recreational Complex. Somebody might want to forget that I said that last one. I'll keep going. So, why a five-year road plan is important? I think just as important as that is understanding how we arrive with that road plan. So, we use software that's called RSMS, Road System Management Software. And what that is, is it's a software that we get through the state domain, and we go out every two to three years, and we drive all 307 roads, and, what was that? We drive all those roads, and we look at all kinds of issues of the roads, from transverse cracking, longitudinal cracking, alligator cracking, potholes, a bunch of different things. We look at the traffic on the road, we look at the importance of the road, which I'll get into in the next slide, and all of that information, the RSMS gives us a report that helps us with a comprehensive assessment of the condition of all the roads in the city. It helps us prioritize and do a categorization of the proposed work. It's important, it's just a recommended schedule for form work for all the upgrades, and then helps us with planning and budget for the capital improvements.
So, because people often ask, how did you decide on what four roads are going to be paved next year? So, John's point is that it's a comprehensive analysis of condition, traffic, location, all those things go into saying, these are the four most important roads for next year. Would it have anything to do with who's sitting behind the cabinet?
Right. And then we try and group those roads together. So, if there's three roads on one end of town and a fourth on the other end, we try to, you know, maybe that'll be the following year, we group it, you know, spend that money, you know, in that neighborhood where the three roads are, so that's also a factor. But as we talk about that factor affecting repair, so physical location, which I kind of just touched upon a little bit, priority in the RSMS report. So, importance, importance in that report just talks about, for example, if you have a dead-end road with one or two houses on it versus a street like North Street with a hospital or College Avenue with a police station. So, that might be a little bit higher in the importance factor. Then we have the third bullet, and the fifth kind of go hand in hand, so maintenance category and cost. So, if we're looking at doing a bunch of shim and overlay roads, and then we have reclaim, well, it's much more expensive to do reclaim than it is to just shim and overlay, so that goes hand in hand with what we have for that year, for the annual budget appropriation. And then finally, the main Department of Transportation, MPI, which is the Municipal Partnership Initiative, and we've been doing these now for six or seven years easily.
These are very, very important for.
And typically, that's a 50-50 split between DOT and Waterville to get some state aid roads done. So, been having a lot of good success with those in the, in the past.
And the RSMS is expected to be updated this year?
This year. So, we've been using RSMS 11. RSMS 16 just came out this year, and I've been actually working with the guy that is writing the software, and he just came out with the latest version, 16.12 or 13 or whatever, and we're actually going to start working that next week with the system, the software engineer on that. So, yeah, oh, so.
One of the important pieces of this slide is what's in green. So, those are the roads that were funded through bond, which is a very important thing to remember, because, you know, in the past, prior to four or five years ago, we always paid for those kind of big projects through our surplus. Our surplus was at a point, but we haven't been able to do that anymore, so we've been borrowing money to make all of those repairs proceed, which I think is critical to do. But hopefully, we get back to the day where we have operating money and not have to borrow.
And that's all 50 road projects in five years, an upgrade, we made substantial progress in upgrading. There's still a lot left to do with the remaining 150, 250 roads that depending on the RSMS.
Right.
In time for its movements.
So, the ones listed in 2017, sorry, Mark, just to back this up, have we done those yet or?
Yes.
Yeah. Those are.
That's the annual expenditure we've had over the past five years, actually the amount spent on all of this.
So, the.
Blue is general fund, our annual appropriation. The red is the bond funding that we've had in incremental quarters.
Have we spent all of our bond money now, just about?
Just about, pennies left over, yeah.
So, if we were to put 2018 on that graph, we probably would not have a red bar on.
Correct. Very, very small if there was one, yeah.
If that was, it was remaining a lot, I think, right there. We had 137 dollars.
Right, and that, yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. So, these are just some different types of maintenance that we perform in Waterville, everything from cracked seal, all of it full reconstruction. And as you can see, it gets longer in longevity the further you get down, but keep in mind, it does get more expensive the further you get down on that list. We try and keep the majority of our roads at the shim and overlay, the preventative line and higher.
So, when we bond and rebuild the roads.
Reclaim and below.
Last two categories?
Last three.
Last three.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead. So, what we try to do every year is, when we have money, enough money, is to come up with what we think is a reasonable annual appropriation. So, that's going to be a big question next year for us, because no more bond money or very, very little.
Right.
Bond money left. So, this will be the first time in 2018 that we'll have a very, very meager paving budget, because the last five years, we've had bond money every year, which has allowed us to do quite a bit. So, for 2018, hopefully, we'll get at least a $250,000 in our annual operating budget. But that last paragraph is, is a key on looking forward as to how much we should spend every year in order to not fall behind. And when we compare our annual budget with Fairfield, Winslow, Oakland, we're pretty much still behind annual operating amount per mile than what those three area towns are. So, hopefully, we can get back to the point of coming up out of our operating budget with enough money to keep pace with our road work. The last five years have been great, because we've made some huge, huge improvements.
In all senses, going to be planning for 2018 will depend on the RSMS and the level of funding coming.
So, you're, you're going around now and doing that survey of roads and trying to prioritize?
My day.
My day you start?
Yeah, that's what it started, yeah.
Yeah.
Mike, is there a plan in place to try to get this into our operating budget so that we don't have to go after bonding every time we want to pave?
I mean, I, I've seen towns that have, and I do this, this is part of my work, and I've seen towns that have dedicated budgets that they don't, they have their budget for paving, and that's what they use every year, and they split it up, they use the RSMS system. Is there any way that we can at least work toward, I mean, if we're, if we're forced to bond, I'd at least like to be able to tell constituents that we're working toward not bonding and kind of self-funding ourselves every year to a point, and I don't know, John or Mark, if you could chime in, is that even doable? Am I asking for the moon, or is that something that we could consider? I know it'd be tight, and I know it's probably going to be a process, I'm not saying next year, we got to do it, but I'm thinking that maybe we should work into getting our operating budget a little bit higher.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
I think that's actually really up to the council to decide when we do our budget, but I'm guessing unless revenue sharing has some kind of increase, because the money has to come from somewhere else, especially, so.
Right.
However, I think.
Any bonding payments coming?
There is. I think it'd be worth looking at the debt schedule to see how that goes down. I don't think there's anything in the near future, but there's also going to be increase of tip revenues in different areas. That's an area, I think, that you could look for that revenue to be used as well.
I think it's up to us to tell you, with the number of miles out there and the condition that we have, we think the minimum annual amount the city should appropriate to not lose ground is X amount. And X amount is more than 250, you.
And I'll tell you why I'm, I don't like bonding for paving jobs, because if you do a 20, 20-year bond on a paving job, now all of a sudden, you're going to have to pave again, and then it's just a revolving, a revolving domino effect. I'd like to see to work away, wean away from the bonding effort. Mike, in, Mike, your efforts to get this, get this squared away from when you started and what you're telling me, and what, where we are now is absolutely tremendous, and it's commendable that we're, that we're here and being able to pave like we have, so something to consider. Especially when you do the sidewalks like Gilman Street.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It's great to see kind of where we've come from and think about moving forward, what the issues we're going to be facing. I think we all agree it would be ideal to have a budget that would cover these issues as part of our regular budget issues, but I think we're all going to have to work with the money that we have and figure out the best way to move forward from there. So, I think what this is giving us is the opportunity to kind of start thinking strategically and creatively from now, so I really appreciate seeing this laid out in such a clear and comprehensive way. So, thank you.
Questions here?
So, Waterville being a service town too, do our roads have any sort of like expectancy in towns like Fairfield and Winslow that have extra stress?
Well, yeah, I mean, we certainly have more traffic as a result of being a service center, no question about that.
So, the likelihood expectancy of our road would be less than surrounding towns, probably?
Yeah.
It depends on how they, how they're built, probably.
Depends, right, on how they're built. And years ago, that's why they created a revenue sharing two program. They had revenue sharing one, and they created revenue sharing two for service centers, and the reason for that was service centers have pressures that rural towns don't have, road pressures, yeah.
So, it's to make them help pay for it.
But revenue sharing two was basically out of the way. So, well, thank you. We wanted to do this to keep you informed and to get some of this stuff out before budget time. So, our intent over the next few, couple months is to have other department heads come in, air force, fire, so we have some of these discussions before budget time in April, May, so you can get to ask them what's happening at the airport and how the revenue's coming in, and fire department, how's the equipment going. We don't save at all for this.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Again.